Well, good afternoon, everyone. Boy, is this an exciting day or what? This is Thursday, April 16th, 1:00, and this is the City Council Meeting of the City of Rancho Mirage, Library Board, Housing Authority, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. And I am Mayor Iris Smotrich for about another 15 minutes. So I welcome you all here, and I'm so glad to see all these beautiful shining faces out there. So, without further ado, why don't we start with saluting the flag to our amazing, best city and country in the world. Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Cindy, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Mayor Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hobart?
Here.
Okay, we're all here and accounted for. First, I'd just like to make a couple of comments before we get on into the additional business of the day, because this has been an incredible journey for me. I have met and worked with many, many wonderful people. Staff members have been amazing and always most anxious to be of help. And although I have always tried to thank everyone along the way if I've missed anyone, please let me extend an additional thank you to everyone right now. You have all contributed so greatly in making my year as your mayor an extraordinary experience. Needless to say, it would be impossible to thank everyone by name, but there is one person that I give great thanks to. And in case you don't already know, that is my husband, Tom. He has always been there, he's always has a kind word, and he always has a bit of humor. And for that, and much, much more, I thank him so very much. So, without further ado, we will be going on to our business at hand, and if our Mayor Protem for another three or four minutes will join me down in front, it would be my honor to do the honors. First of all, welcome again. And I know it's very customary for the outgoing mayor to present the spouses and partners of the City Council members with a small gift. And unfortunately, I had asked Tommy if he would just make a nice dinner for everyone, but he said that the KP duty that he's usually on, he's now on strike. So, we figured as a second-best alternative, we would present everyone with a lovely gift certificate for the Ritz-Carlton, and that way they could have their own dinners up there and really enjoy a great dinner. And we'll do our own dinners later on. So, let me just present everyone with a gift certificate, and, excuse me just a second. So let me give them all to you, and you can press it. Oh, I'm sorry, dear, you don't get one. But that's okay. We'll just, we'll make up for it another way. Okay, now, on to this gentleman here on my left, because needless to say, he is one remarkable person. You know, there are many kinds of people in our lives that we come and contact with all through our lives, and many people are great workers, and many people like other people to do the work, and they're very comfortable with that. And there are many people who say, "Why?", and there's many people who say, "Why not?" And Dana Hobart is one of those people. And he always says, "Why not? Why not have a planetarium for our city and our entire region? Why not have funding for pet adoption? Why not have our own dog park? Why not have subcommittees with council members to help make sure the proper decisions are made for our city of Rancho Mirage? Why not have the mayor's position rotated to ensure harmony among the leaders of our city? Why not have undergrounding of our electrical wires for a more beautiful city? Why not pay off the city debt, making sure we secure our employees' pension funding? Why not eliminate our sphere of influence to the benefit of our city? And all these things you have made happen. You are a true visionary. You have had great foresight for our city for many, many years, and you've had great business sense to make sure that our city is a beautifully oiled machine. So I would like to add my personal thanks to you for all the work you have done on behalf of our residents, on behalf of the city, and wish you many more happy and healthy, really healthy, years for many years to come with renewed strength and only good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. It's a nice compilation of some of the things that have been very important for the city. I can only say that while these ideas, for some reason, pop into my mind, you can't accomplish anything in city government unless you have a city council that works with you. And I can tell you that since 2002, when I think we embarked on all of that, and that was the time we started with the undergrounding just after that and the mayor rotation, we've had a council that consists of the people you're looking at, as well as Ron Meepos, Alan Seaman, and Gordon Moeller. As we have worked together, this has been a tremendously cohesive, together kind of council for which you can accomplish big things. We do it in a way that everybody gets credit for participating in it. Doesn't really matter who makes, who comes up with the idea. What counts is, does everybody agree? And does everybody get their two bits worth in to modify things just enough so they can agree to the general program or plan? Our council has just been stupendous, and I can tell you that I anticipate that the coming year will be easy for me because of the council that I have. And let me also say, this past year has been a remarkable year. None of us who are up here have served under a woman mayor before. And while we all pretend that we have no gender preferences, that we're all equal and all of that, everybody still kind of says, "I wonder how she's going to do, you know? Keep my fingers crossed", and all this sort of thing. Iris, you've been an amazing mayor, simply amazing. Not only have you been involved in and participating in the momentous events that we've undertaken during the course of this past year under your leadership, but you've been beyond that. You've been somebody who has touched the public, has touched our staff in ways that we haven't connected before, that you have been largely responsible for bringing us together as a broader community. People like looking at you. And once you've got their attention, then those people are usually persuaded by the logic that comes from you, the leadership that comes from you, and the input of the rest of the council. I can only tell you that for a person who is so new to government, four years has been her period of time that she's been part of Rancho Mirage government, I think it's about four, may be muffing it a little bit, but in that period of time, some might have had questions or doubts as to whether you could step in and become a real mayor, a genuine mayor, assertive where you have to be assertive, a conciliatory where you need to draw people together, and you recognize that. There is nobody in this room or nobody who'll be watching this on television who has any doubt about the fact that you have been a tremendous mayor and that you've been a cohesive factor for us all. We're going to miss you, sweetheart, only in the context of who chairs the meeting. But we're going to have you there with us, and I have no reason to think that the success and the greatness of this city council, and I truly believe we've had a great city council for a considerable period of time, that it will continue and that your leadership will be just as significant as it has been this past year. So let me get a kiss on the other side. And don't go away, don't go away, we have a surprise gift. In order to use this effectively, you're probably going to have to take down that eight-by-12 photograph of Tom that's in the living room and put it, put it in this in its rightful spot, so people will always know you were the lady at Rancho Mirage between 1914 and 19, 2014 and 2015. How I wish, how I wish we could go back to the 19 period, but we can't. I'll carry, I'll carry this over for you, because we wouldn't want you to have to lift it.
Thank you all, thank you so much. Okay, so until Dana takes over officially, I will just finish up a few things from this chair, and that will include the selection of mayor, and Mayor Protem, and Cindy, our city clerk, will just bring us up to date on that, because there is a formality in passing the gavel.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the City Council appoints a council member to serve as mayor and one to serve as Mayor Protem. The new mayor is appointed based on the longest term of consecutive service on the City Council without having served as mayor. The Mayor Protem will be the council member with the second-longest term of continuous service. Prior to appointment of the new mayor and Mayor Protem, council members shall each be identified with the length of time they have had continuous service without having served as mayor. City records reflect that Dana Hobart has three years of continuous service. Ted Weil has two years, three months' worth of continuous service. Charles Townsend Vincy has one year. Richard W. Kite also has one year. And Iris Smotrich, as current mayor, has zero years. Based on service records, Dana Hobart is due to serve as mayor, and Ted Weil is due to serve as Mayor Protem. A vote by the City Council will confirm these appointments. And that concludes my staff report.
Okay, so if I can have a motion?
So I move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, please cast your vote. Motion carries, 5-0. So now the gavel is officially handed over to our new mayor, Dana Hobart.
Thank you, Iris. In looking at the vote that we just saw on the screen, reminded me of our junior high school years, remember? It was pretty gauche to vote for yourself, nobody would ever do it. And I realize I just violated the pledge I took back in the eighth grade, so forgive me if any of you were there and you remember it. I don't, I don't plan on taking but just a moment or two to explain what, what I think I should be doing, our council should be doing, our city should be undertaking. It'll be, as far as I'm concerned, business as usual. There's, nothing has changed in the last years. When there are problems that are small, we'll try to solve them. When there are problems that are large, we will deal with them and solve them. Nothing is too large and nothing is too small for our attention. When our public has an issue in their neighborhood or concerning them personally, we invite them to continue to feel that they are well-received when they telephone us, email us, or contact our staff, and let their issues be known. It is our intention to solve the big and the small of the problems. It's our intention to keep Rancho Mirage the finest city, I'd like to think the best-managed city. Business is frugally handled in this city. We respect people's right of diverse opinions on, on everything. We have always kept it as a policy from 2002, that the city sort of stays out of most of the social issues as they hit the headlines. We do that so that we do not lose effectiveness as a council working together. We all have disparate ideas about a variety of social issues, and we just feel that to make the one form of government work that does work, nonpartisan city government, to keep that nonpartisan government working, we stay away from the issues over which we have no jurisdiction or control. As a council, we can personally be involved to whatever extent we wish, and we invite each other to be involved in issues as they deem important to, to themselves. So, in the future, as in the past, we will be dedicated to making this city a well-run, efficient, frugally managed city, and we give you our pledge to continue as we have been doing. Thank you so much for being here today. It's nice to see so many friendly faces when we have a changing of the guard. And again, Iris, I know that I'm taking backseat when they're looking at me. They'd much rather be looking at you, and I congratulate you on a, on a year of service to our city that is unexcelled.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now, let's move on with non-agenda public comments. This is the time that anyone can speak on a subject that is not on today's agenda. Do we have any cards? Just for the record, I've been informed that anybody who should tune in on television, that they will think that Iris has turned into an ogre. And we're going to correct that so that she gets proper credit, and I'm stuck with what Thank you, Cindy. The ambiguity has been erased. Have you noticed how well we handled our first problem? Okay, we have one written request, Jeffrey Baum, Jeffrey and Ken Chavez. I didn't have my glasses on, Ken, apologize.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hobart, Mayor Protem Weil. It is an honor to be back here, and this will be our final Sunnylands update for the season. My name is Jeffrey Baum, and I work at the Annenberg Foundation Trust at Sunnylands, and I'm here with Ken Chavez from Sunnylands. And for us, it's, it's a special treat to be back today, because when we opened Sunnylands to the public, Dana Hobart was the mayor at the time and presided over our opening ceremony. So we are delighted to be able to collaborate with you again. And before I go on with my update, I, I can't continue without saying how much we've appreciated the warmth and the support and the encouragement we've received from Councilmember Smotrich. Both Councilmember Smotrich and her husband, Tom, have been so generous and so supportive from the very beginning of the establishment of the trust, and they've opened their home to us and offered encouragement every step of the way. And the, the lunch that you organized last Thursday was a real special opportunity to showcase the very best of Rancho Mirage, and we were honored to be included in that recognition. So, on behalf of Jeff Cowan and the, my colleagues at the trust, we're, we are very blessed to be candidly, have been located in Rancho Mirage and will continue to be a strong partner. So going to my report, though, the, the first report I made of this season was back in September, and I mentioned that we were doing something special that was new at Sunnylands. We were deciding in a sustainable effort not to spray our olive trees, there's more than 600 trees at Sunnylands, and, and let the fruit grow and then harvest the fruit. It was a pilot project, so we, we picked 50 trees out, and we invited the public to come in on a hot summer day in September to come predawn, and we had more than 100 people show up at a predawn hour to help shake out the olives and collect the olives of the trees. And so, another wonderful product of Rancho Mirage, we just returned from the, the pressing company in Ojai, is a bottle of Sunnylands olive oil. And that's, so, so that olive oil is available in the gift shop, because we only did 50 trees this time, it yielded about 200 bottles of olive oil. But I've saved one for the, our friends of the city, but also, next year, because this experiment has been so successful, we're going to let all the trees fruit and collect the oil and hopefully have a, an abundant amount of olive oil to share in our gift shop and with our friends in the community, and have yet another special product that Rancho Mirage can be known for. So, and then, so thank you for your support of that and helping, letting us share that news about Sunnylands, and I'm going to let Ken Chavez update you on some great events that are coming up in May at Sunnylands.
Good afternoon, congratulations, Mayor Hobart. Again, in May, we're reviving our Films on the Great Lawn series. We have two coming up documentary films. One is on nature, Love Thy Nature, and on May 1st, and on May 15th, we'll have a film about one of Iran's greatest sculptors. So we invite you and the public to come out and bring a lawn chair, bring a blanket, bring some refreshments, and to see some movies at night at Sunnylands. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Were there any other comments to be, yeah?
And we're, we're leaving some of the schedules for May in the back table, if anybody...
Okay, great. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm Larry Nichols, and I live in Rancho Mirage at 34 Champagne Circle. And I'm not sure what I can add to this, it's been a beautiful ceremony so far, but Iris, I wanted to tell you, you've been one of the greatest ambassadors to our city that we've had in a long time, and I'm proud of you for that. Your involvement in so many things, earthquake preparedness, the emergency preparedness, you go to all the senior centers, you go to the Brayle Institute, wherever there's a needing person, you're always there, and that's a great thing. You welcomed our new friends, our new Japanese friends to our city, the ANA Experience, the Nippon Airways. You learned to say konnichiwa for good afternoon, Ohio gosseimas for good morning, and kambawa for good evening, and I'm sure they appreciate every bit of that. But to have that in our city now is going to give us even more exposure, and that's thanks to all the council, but you especially treated them with a lot of respect. I was proud a few years ago to be part of your election team. I am going to be just as proud when you're mayor in your next term. That'll happen again, I'll tell you that today. There is also an end, and this is the end of your, but there is also a beginning. And, you know, Dana Hobart has been a rock, and we all need to be proud of him as our mayor, and he'll lead our city like he has in the past. The residents of Rancho Mirage don't realize when they look at this dais just how carefully they're going to be taken care of and looked after. And all I can say, I guess in adding this, I'm proud to live in Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Are there any other comments? Doug Watson. Lurking in the shadows.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Iris, I want to congratulate you on an extraordinary year. And Dana, it's lovely to have you back at the helm as a member of the subcommittee. So this is my third mayor in a very short amount of time, it seems like. Mayor Kite, Iris, you've done an extraordinary job. And I had an opportunity to sit next to you this past Thursday, and I've told you then what I will tell now everyone publicly, is I think that the mechanism that you used while you were in charge of your office was a lever of grace that I found extraordinary. Not only as someone who got a chance to watch because you were at our hotel all the time, but the ladies and gentlemen who served you did it with great care because they, the way in which you and Tom carried yourself in our hotel and amongst the grace around the city. And for our, our businesses and for our members of citizenship, those gifts that you give to make people feel warm, relaxed, and at ease in their own skin, I think is an enormous tribute to you as an individual. And so, we look forward to having you and Tom come up. This time, we'll leave the tomatoes off your salad, it only took us a year to figure that out. But we're grateful for everything that you've done for us, and to Mr. Kite and to Mr. Hobart and to Randy and everyone else, we're a year soon. On May 15th, we're a year open, so we'll invite you up. But I wanted to let you know that on behalf of the Ritz-Carlton Hotel Company, what you've done for us on our behalf and the way in which you let us participate under your watch has been great. So, congratulations. Mr. Hobart, we wish you great success, ladies and gentlemen.
And thank you so much, Jeff.
Anyone else?
Thank you all, to all your ladies and gentlemen who have always made us feel welcome with special attention, and your kitchen and your chef for the most incredible food. So you've just been an amazing addition to our city, and we thank you.
We'll move on now to City Council comments. I wanted to use this opportunity to let you know that all of the things that I discussed in the prior remarks that I made about all the projects that I've been involved with and will be involved with, takes a very heavy toll on my time and on my wife. I just want you to know that Vicki has been, for me, the most essential link to me concluding any idea that I've ever submitted, because not only does she insist that I explain it all to her as I'm going forward, and I hate like taking time out for moving in the direction I'm moving, but what irritates me most, sweetheart, is that she finds holes in my logic that she makes me plug, and she comes up with constructive criticism that oftentimes moves the direction to something more subtle or something less subtle than where I was. But it's the amount of time that, that I spend, and I think that all of our council members spend, the amount of time it takes to do this job right is immense. A lot of people don't know that in addition to the functions that we attend here, the council meetings and all of that sort of thing, they don't know that we belong to other outside organizations, it's required of us, like the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, the League of California Cities, and others, that have meetings, that have events that... meetings, that have events that we have to attend, have training, learning, matters that we have to comprehend. So, we're away a lot. Sometimes Vicki can go with me, sometimes she can't for one reason or another. But the amount of time that this job takes from our marriage is a lot more than anybody here would ever really imagine. And Vicki has been my backbone. Without you supporting me in the ideas and sometimes quirky ventures that I get off on to, nothing would happen. I would be, I'd feel too restricted if I thought that you weren't with me on this voyage, this governmental enterprise. And I just feel so inadequate in expressing my appreciation and my love for everything you have done because your contribution to this city doesn't get your name in lights, but it certainly should be remembered by those of us who have gone through these past 12 years. I couldn't have done it without you. One other comment I would make is one of the reasons that we do spend so much time on this job is we have a system of government that is unlike any other city that I know of, regardless of which valley it may be in. And that is our system of having subcommittees. We learned back in 2002 and 2003, we had situations where somebody would come up with a project. They'd come up to the stand. It finally would have gone through Planning Department or some other department. It would have gotten to the point where it came time to approve. And the city council did not approve it for whatever reasons the city council had. And people stood at that lectern on a good number of occasions back in those years, saying, "We've done everything that staff asked us to do. And now you're saying we have to go back to the drawing boards?" Well, it was a difficult situation to put people through. And it was unfair, at least in appearance. But that was, as I would remind some of those people, that was the way the system was written. That's the way it's constructed. And you can spend a year and a half with city staff and be turned away by city council who doesn't accept a staff recommendation. So, what we did to circumvent that glaring hole in the management of our city is we created, I think it was in 2003, we created a system whereby we created committees, Section 19 Committee, Section 30 Committee, Commercial Committee, this committee and that committee, Section 24, Business Ventures Committee type of thing. We didn't have that one specifically, but it was involved, I think, in our Commercial Committee. These committees met with staff on a regular basis so that as a project went through city government, the people behind the project always knew, once modifications were made by the, suggested and then followed and made by the proponents, that the modifications took place as the program moved forward in the system. So, that by the time it came to the city council, there were already two council members, one shy of the Brown Act prohibition. There were always two council members who were in support of the project so that the developer or builder or businessman knew that all he had to do or she had to do was pick up one more vote out of the balance of the three. Since that system has been implemented, I think only once or twice over all these years has the council not approved the application that is before it. Because the city council worked with staff agreeing to the changes, city council modifying staff's position then, saying, "Well, we don't buy that. We want to go this way." And staff recognizing that you're talking to two of among five people who are going to vote on the issue, then they move with the council's suggestion. Almost always, I can rarely think of exceptions, where we weren't in harmony at any time in doing that because we talk things out and logic generally prevails. But the system has worked extremely well. And I want to say, it works better than it ever did with Randy Binder as our city manager. Randy has adopted the system not as a threat to staff, but as a part of the process where we all get together to bring to the city of Rancho Mirage the best of everything that we can bring. Randy has made sure that every member of staff who at first found this to be unusual, maybe resisted it a bit, there's no resistance any longer. It works together. And one of the great advantages of that is that the council members are elected by the voters of the city. We all live here in the city. Staff, few live in the city, but most do not. So, by living in the city, we have a perspective of what we want in the city based on what our neighbors have pounded on us about, based upon what our friends are looking for when they're thinking about buying property, which city in which to locate. All of these things gel under that subcommittee system. And I want to say it again and finally because it deserves emphasis. Randy Binder is an essential ingredient of this, and he works well. If he disagrees with an idea that I've got, or Richard has, or Ted, or Iris, or Charlie, if he disagrees, he'll say, "Look, let's sit down and talk about this. I'm not sure that I've made myself clear." He'll take some of the onus off of us, saying, "I don't think you, that I've communicated what I should have communicated." And when we realize, of course, that he had and we just kind of missed it. But he is such an integral part to this. And he's in his learning curve. He's nowhere near at his apex. He's only been there about, I don't know what, three years? He's only been city manager for three years. He came straight out of the Planning Department. But I can tell you that along with the city council, along with a wonderful city staff, and I mean wonderful city staff, sometimes they wonder if we think, we think they're wonderful, but we do. We just see our jobs being what we see them to be. We have a great staff, a great city manager, and in my opinion, a great city council. And together, we're hoping this coming fiscal year and regular annual year will be everything you hope it will be. Thank you. Are there any other council comments? Charlie?
I do. I do, I do.
Who asked you?
Well, I thought the new mayor asked me. You know, I have a lot to be thankful for today. Because a year ago, I was elected to sit in this chair. And this was Gord Muller's chair that I'm sitting in. And to be elected and have the confidence of this council, to be part of these learned people, and to be part of Iris's first mayorship, which I'm sure there'll be many others along the line. The city staff, like Dana said, everybody has just welcomed me with great open arms and gave me such confidence to be the youngest kid on the block, which I'm referred to. I just, I don't know what more to say, but to thank you for everything that this council has done, this staff, the voters who voted me in here. This is a milestone day for me. And I will remember this as I did this time a year ago. Thank you.
Iris, a lot has been echoed as far as your praise is concerned, but it's still not enough. You've done a marvelous job. You have been an extraordinary ambassador. You have set the bar very high for anyone to follow from the standpoint of the good and public relations that you have spread throughout the city. We ran together and were elected together. I got to know you then during good times, during stressful times. And at no time did you ever waver or did you lose your composure. And I think it instilled a great degree of friendship that has manifested itself throughout this council. And I can only say, "Thank you. I wish you the best. And I feel privileged to continue to serve on this council with you."
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Mayor. And Iris, well, the year is over. And those of us who have been mayor before all remember that day when we finished our first year. And we think, "Boy, we could do this for another year. I finally know what it's all about." So, I'm sure you're sitting there thinking somewhat the same thing. I'm sure there were nights when you said to Tommy, "Why am I doing this?" But with your patience and your persistence, you were able to lead our city with a personal touch that exhibited itself on the first day as mayor. Your special touch included redoing the library, I mean, the library, the lobby with your special insight, initiating a newsletter from the mayor to keep our residents better informed, and acknowledging all those who have given so much to our city, whether it was the dedicated staff member or the enthusiastic commissioner. They were all shown the same appreciation for a job well done. Year is gone, but for you, you can now return to the less hectic world of the city council. Dana is ready to step in to the position he served three terms previously. I've had the pleasure of working with him over the last 13 years, Dana. It's been a long time.
You have looked a little older to me.
Much has been accomplished over those years that you've served as mayor. And I look forward to another exciting year as we continue to make Rancho Mirage the best city in the valley or even the state. Congratulations to both of you as we celebrate the change in leadership today.
Thank you, Richard. Iris, do you have anything you'd like to add? Any postscript, as they say?
Well, there's really not much to say. There's so many people that I would love to thank individually. And I have, as I said, I've tried to thank them along the way. But I could never expect to have this kind of an experience, especially as the years have gone by. So, it is, it has been such an honor and a tribute to all of my background that I've been able to achieve, to be able to achieve this one more milestone of such greatness with all of you. Because this is something that we all share. It is not just me, it is all of us. So, I thank you again.
Thank you, Iris. And for me, one last comment. I'd like to express my gratitude to Steve Cantonea for all of the work that he and his firm have done for our city. Some of it is paid to do, much of it is not paid to do, but does it voluntarily and to help charities and various institutions in the city. Ted, why would I say Ted when I meant to say Steve? Steve is an extremely capable lawyer. He is, he's got a good mind for parsing difficult issues. And we continuously rely upon him. He and I sometimes debate things if I think I know something about the subject. And we've even locked horns from time to time. But the bottom line is, his heart is with this city as completely as any lawyer who has a heart. And I realize that's assuming facts, not in evidence. But his heart is as much with our city and its success as any of our hearts may be. And I'd like to thank you and your growing staff and Michael for all that they've done and for responding so well to the many demands upon your time that we make from time to time. Steve, it's greatly appreciated. And now, the kumbaya hour is over. And we'll proceed on to the council agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the April 2 regular meeting minutes?
I'll second it.
Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now go to the consent calendar. Would you explain to us, Randy, what this is all about today and what we have to know?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. There are three items on your consent calendar today. The first item is the levy of assessments for landscape and lighting districts. There are five resolutions on your agenda today. The full engineer's report begins on page 2-6 of your staff report. If this is approved today, the hearing for these assessment districts will appear on your June 4, 2015 council agenda. Item number three on your consent calendar is approval of the city manager and city clerk employment agreement amendments. Item number four on consent are demands, and we are here to answer any questions.
Any questions in staff? Seeing none, any member of the audience have any questions about today's consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public session. Can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion's made and seconded. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move now to the action agenda. Number five on your book. Randy, who will be giving us the staff report on this matter?
Bruce Harry, our Public Works Director, will introduce the topic.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, members of the city council. This item is regarding the CV Link project. The proposed CV Link multimodal trail estimated to cost approximately $100 million to construct transects nine valley cities from Desert Hot Springs to Coachella. And is estimated to cost nearly $1.7 million per year to maintain. The proposed trail will cover a path of approximately 50 miles, of which 4.7 miles is located within the city of Rancho Mirage. The majority of the proposed CV Link can be constructed within the Whitewater Wash right-of-way. However, the trail through Rancho Mirage cannot follow the Whitewater Wash for numerous reasons and is planned to route along portions of Highway 111 and adjacent to quiet and well-established residential neighborhoods. Two segments of the proposed CV Link within Rancho Mirage are of concern to the city. They are the Butler Abrams Trail segment located between Frank Sinatra Drive and Country Club Drive along the Wash, and the Highway 111 segment between Paxton Drive and the Rancho Mirage Community Park. The first segment of concern is the proposal to position CV Link on top of the Butler Abrams Trail. This proposal poses numerous negative impacts to adjacent homes and will destroy a famous Butler Abrams Trail that promotes a unique, quiet, tranquil, and rural neighborhood experience for the residents. The transformations that will be required to accommodate the CV Link will be incompatible and inconsistent with this long-established experience. Staff is recommending that the city council take formal action today to oppose the proposed CV Link positioning over the Butler Abrams Trail. Now, I have a few photos I'd like to show of the trail as it exists today. This is a... This is a picture of the trail just north of Country Club. As you can see, it's a nice, quiet, tranquil trail adjacent to residential neighborhoods. It is used on a daily basis by most of the residents. You'll see walking of dogs, exercising, some bicycling. It's also adjacent to, as you can see, homes that are very close to the Butler Abrams Trail. The CV Link project would take this trail and basically almost double it in size and width, and of course, the amount of use of the trail will increase significantly. The second segment of concern is the proposal to cross Highway 111 at Paxton Drive and traverse the city's library property. Staff is concerned with the Highway 111 traffic impacts that will result from the three at-grade crossings being proposed by CV Link and Rancho Mirage. Two of the three at-grade crossings may have no other alternatives, but the crossing at Highway 111 at Paxton has an alternative. Staff recommends that the proposed CV Link trail proceed along the south or west side of Highway 111 from Paxton Drive to the Magnesia Falls Canyon flood control channel, at which point the trail can pass underneath the Highway 111 bridge and connect back to its proposed alignment. This modification will thereby eliminate the Highway 111 at-grade crossing at Paxton Drive and avoid the city library's property. Staff is recommending that the city council take formal action today to oppose the proposed CV Link alignment at the crossing at Highway 111 in Paxton and support an alignment that crosses under Highway 111 at Magnesia Falls flood control channel. And I have a little diagram that shows. The red is what is currently proposed by the CV Link project. As you can see, it proceeds from the west along the south side of 111, then it crosses at grade at the Paxton signal, and then it travels around the backside of the library and then down to the Rancho Mirage Community Park. The proposed alignment we're suggesting would be the green. It's a little faint, but you can see the green. It would stay on the south side or west side of 111 there and go down to the bridge at the flood channel, and then go underneath the bridge and then connect back to the proposed alignment. And this would eliminate the at-grade crossing at 111 and Paxton. This concludes my staff report, and if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Harry? I'd like to open it up for public comment. I know we have people here who are affected and other members of the public who would like to speak. Can I have a hand since I don't seem to have? Wait, I have a, yeah, one person has filed a request, so she gets priority.
Good afternoon, council members and members of the audience. I'm here today to speak regarding the Coachella Valley link between Country Club Drive and Paxton. I don't believe that Bruce mentioned that particular area. I think that I would be speaking for all of the homeowners who live in Thunderbird Villas, Thunderbird Heights, and Thunderbird Cove when I say that we do not see this proposal as beneficial in any way to the homeowners of our community. For people in the audience, perhaps, the proposal is for this link to be directly in front of these three communities, directly in front of us. This proposal, we believe, would be detrimental to our community. No matter what provisions are made to make it attractive, it would ruin the well landscape, beautifully unique entrances of Thunderbird Cove, Thunderbird Heights, and Thunderbird Villas. This proposal will be extremely detrimental to the property values of all of the homes in the areas affected from Paxton to Country Club Drive. These communities are high-end, secluded, private, and well-maintained, and we'd like to keep them that way. This proposal creates a traffic hazard, not only for those using the trail, but also for homeowners entering and exiting our properties. This proposal presents a very real possibility of increased vandalism and crime in our residential The Coachella Valley link is detrimental to the aesthetics, it's detrimental to property values, it is a, and it will lead to increased crime and vandalism in our communities. Those are our concerns, and we believe that this link needs to be not in front of our communities at all. Thank you for your time.
I live in Thunderbird Heights.
Would you state your name also, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. Roger Sack, S-A-C-K, just like bag or gunny, as they would call me in high school. I am, I'm boggled at the proposal. Once this, this trail thing reaches roughly the area where Morningside is, that as I understand, it comes along the west side, what I call the west, everybody else keeps reminding me is north, but along the far side of Morningside until it gets to Country Club, and then turns and comes on Country Club up to 111 through a space that I don't see where there is any space there. And then to face the issue of crossing 111 and destroying, as I would put it, and the lady put it as well, probably the finest landscaped area, the most attractive area in the city, from Country Club to Paxton. The whole thing to me is just grotesque. I don't, I don't know what the CV link is. Is it a legal structure? Is it a utility of some sort? Does it have, for example, condemnation rights? At any rate, just a mere visual review, standing, say, at the villas looking on toward Palm Desert, you can see that it is a disaster. And I would hope that you would, because it wasn't brought up, I would hope that you would resist it strongly, or, or it needs to be resisted. Thank you.
To respond to your point about whether they have the power of eminent domain, they have the power of eminent domain. However, any city by a majority vote of the council can reject their application for eminent domain and can prevent it. They have learned a long time ago at the city of Rancho Mirage that our city council, city government, will not support any effort of condemnation of property. For those of you that don't quite understand what
That's wonderful news.
What Mr. Sack is talking about, the CV Link has been around now, has been in progress as a, it started off being like a bike path and a running path. Now it's a bike path, a running path, and a path for golf carts and electric engine vehicles that don't exceed 25 miles per hour. There's almost no problem in the valley for them establishing that link or linkway or path, because most of it comes down the Wash. It's owned, for the most part, by CV WD, the Water District. But when they got to Rancho Mirage from Cathedral City, they reach, they reach us currently under the current proposal at Frank Sinatra, at where the Wash hits Frank Sinatra coming from Cathedral City. So their issue is, how do we proceed on so that we can go eventually through Palm Desert and the rest of the valley cities? How do we proceed? Well, Rancho Mirage can't accommodate them, because in our washway, we have three separate golf courses that have been talked about as being the potential route for the link. The first golf course is Morningside, the second one is The Springs, and a little further down is the Rancho Los Palmas Golf Course. So, and Thunderbird, yes, Thunderbird. Mustn't forget Thunderbird. You got a Richard over there sending me vibes.
That's, that's us.
And you too.
Yes.
So we have, they've known from the beginning that they weren't going to be able to get through any of these, and we've told them they can't. So now they're at the intersection of Frank Sinatra. They want to, they want to travel east, and they want to find a route to do it. Right now, they're talking about the Butler Abrams Trail, which is the one that Public Works Director Bruce Harry showed you pictures of, which would destroy the tranquility of a rural rustic area in the city that has great potential and already has fantastic homes that would be undermined in value significantly. So part of today's motion is to tell CVAG, the lead company, the lead agency in this project, is to tell them, these two proposals that we're talking about, we disapprove if we vote in that manner. The question is going to be, in the fight that is yet to come, and there will be a fight, believe me, is how do they get from Frank Sinatra and the Wash? Well, to some extent, that's not our problem, that's their problem. We've tried to cooperate with them. It's a valley-wide project that everybody has been tacitly concerned with and would like to see, particularly in the time when it was talked about as being a bike path and a walking path. Things changed, in my view, when they added motor vehicles to it, but you could see the line that was on the screen a moment ago. So we have to work with them to try to find an acceptable route. We're telling them that there are two present considerations if we vote in favor of what will be today's motion. We're trying to tell them that you have to find something different. And you make a great case. For example, suppose they said at Bob, at Frank Sinatra, we're now coming at Frank Sinatra, let's make a right turn and go up to Highway 111, and we'll go down 111 all the way from there instead of from Country Club down, which is what their current plan is, all the way down. Well, the problem that creates, not only on your segment of it, where you have residential entrances and exits, and you have your vehicles going in and out, how are you going to feel about a walkway that's some 20 or more feet wide, not walkway, a driveway, a pathway, that's 20 feet wide? How are you going to feel about trying to get in and get out when you've got vehicles coming down right in front of you? Well, that's, everybody on this council is very sympathetic to this issue. How about businesses along the way? When cars have to turn into a Realtor or a flower shop or any other shop along the way, how are they going to turn in, being aware of oncoming Highway 111 traffic, not to mention the, the traffic that is going to be on the path? I mean, it's going to create a dangerous situation, and your council, I can tell you, is dedicated to doing something about it. We are the only city thus far to have spoken out on this issue. We had a, we had just learned, we'll talk more about this later, but we had just learned that they, their plan for financing ongoing operations and maintenance costs was going to be by using our TOT funds to compel us to do that. We voted five to zero to reject that. It was in the newspaper, and that was the first inkling anybody in this valley had, aside from a few insiders, as to how they were planning on financing this project. And we'll talk more about that again in a little bit. But anyway, I wanted to give you that background for those that didn't understand the, the issue and indeed the severity of the issue.
Well, thank you very much, and I take it that means that you're, you're watching the area when they hit Country Club from there all the way up and down 111 and, well, thanks.
We're very concerned about it, and we're, we're going to, I think, be successful in the long run.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And don't you dare say anything to my wife.
I might be a little short for this.
You've already done enough damage in this house.
I'm trouble. Thank you, Councilman Iris, for looking after our great city. And welcome, Mr. Hobart. You've got some big shoes to fill.
Indeed, small shoes. I can't fit, fit them either way.
Well, I know you'll do it.
Big or small.
Anyway, 13 years ago, I wanted to build a home, new home for myself, so I decided to pick Rancho Mirage as a city to build it in, because it is the best city in the valley. And I drove around, drove around, and found the perfect spot for me, and it's on Butler Trail. I can walk my dogs, I have no one to upset, quiet. And then CV Link decides that this isn't going to be a trail, it's going to be a roadway. And this roadway, Sarah, do you have a little map? That's my house on the right, is going to be 10 feet from my kitchen window, which is the two red dots, and 10 feet from my bedroom. And my neighbor, Mr. Frank, to the right, it's going to go through his front yard. And then we have that beautiful access road that, they say they're not going to use it for an access, but it would be an access road. So my house would be basically a service station where they come by the front window and the side, and it would make it unlivable and unsellable, as Mr. Frank's house would be unlivable and unsellable, and all the wonderful buildable lots along that trail would be unbuildable and unsellable. So this would be a huge, huge problem for our neighborhood, and we know you're not going to let them do that, are you? Say no, Mr. Hobart.
No, Mr. Hobart.
No, we love this city, and we love our location.
We'll fight it.
And, you know, we're counting on you.
Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Ex-Mayor, my name is Dan Smith. I'm the president of Thunderbird Villas. I'm here with Sid Hubbard, who is the president of the Heights. I've been asked to represent Thunderbird Country Club, the Villas, and the Cove. I got a lot of questions to ask. You might have solved the problem of the width, but I've got a million questions. Maybe I can get together with the city attorney, because we will be represented by attorneys on the, in this matter. What people are not thinking about, when they come up Country Club and then go onto 111, you've got a taking in eminent domain, and I know there's no compensation for eminent domain, but you've got a situation where the taking will, will put the walkway, speedway, whatever you want to call it, up through our entry gate, which will be done with. One thing that nobody's ever been thinking about, how are they going to support the traffic that goes over the tunnel from the Heights, the Cove, and the Villas underneath the road? That's point number two. Point number three, they're going to take the guardhouse for the Heights, they're going to take the guardhouse for the Cove. What about the fire station? How are you going to get traffic? If you look at, if you look at the roadway that they're going to build, you're going to have the fire station that's right there. How are those fire trucks going to get out when there's traffic? There's going to be, it's going to be a mess and a disaster. And does anybody here know exactly how wide this link is? You said 20 feet. I think it's more.
Yeah, it's 20 feet with some shoulders on either side, so it could be about 22 feet in width somewhere.
Right. Will it affect Thunderbird Country Club property at all?
I don't think so, but I mean, it'll affect
It won't be on Thunderbird Country Club's side. It'll be on the side across from Thunderbird Country Club.
Okay, so it's going to be, again, Villas, Heights, Cove, and the Fire Department.
Yes.
We have attorneys that we've already spoken to about this. We'll probably meet with Mr. Quinton Nilla to see what our options are. One of the problems for the Villas are that I represent the Villas, and the Villas do not own the property. So there's going to be a fourth entity who will be involved in the lawsuit, if there has to be one, through the city against the CV Link. There are a lot of people that buy property there, that live very quietly. When this happens, again, what this kind lady said here, about 10 feet from a house, when you go into certain areas in the Heights and the, and the Villas, you're going to be right next to some houses. We've had no crime, because it's, they're gated-guarded communities, and we have very good good security. I think one of the big items are, because, you know, some of the people will find that it's going to be an easy access, whereas we have no traffic there now, except for people walking and maybe some bicycles, there may be other, some traffic, there may be some other traffic that will be undesirable. So, I would ask you and the city attorney, is there a methodology that we can use with our attorneys to meet with Rancher Mirage and the city attorney to talk about this?
Well, definitely, we can meet with them. I would say, right now, it's a little premature, because nothing is, nothing is gelled or close to being gelled with respect to the route. These are issues that we will, that we've started with them, started raising with them, and we will be continuing to raise with them. But I would say, check in every week or two, either call Mr. Quintinia, call me, call Randy, call Richard, and we will keep you posted, because you have every right to be legally represented. You could get represented now if you wanted to, but hopefully, it would be money that you could have saved, but that's your call.
Well, there's enough concern, I mean, in the Villas alone, you have 105 people that pay HOA dues, plus another 25, 30 families there, so it's going to affect, right now, when you leave the Villas, you have a problem, there've been accidents right in front of there, it's tough enough getting out of the, in and out of traffic there now, with this thing going right in front of us, I would submit to you that there would be more and more problems created. Again, Fire Department, the Heights, and the Cove are getting in and out of it now, it's tough enough now, you know, it could obviously turn into a nightmare. How would you intend on paying, we pay taxes on our properties to the, we don't pay it to the city, but how would the city intend on financing their responsibility for the repair and maintenance? I mean, in the information that we've gotten, there are probably 10 to 15 items that you will be responsible for maintenance, and how are you, how do you expect to pay for it?
Well, that's another whole issue that we'll discuss later, not really germane to this motion right now, but we will talk about that, because that is a, that was the issue that we voted on five-zero at the last meeting, two weeks ago. We voted to disapprove of the funding process that CVAG has been proposing for this, and that was the use of our transient occupancy taxes. Eight percent of the increase over the past year would be what we would have to pay, but that's a very unfair system, as we talked about then, and as we'll discuss more today.
Would it be possible, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30 at Thunderbird, with the various presidents of the Heights, Cove, Villas, and the president of Country, of Thunderbird Country Club, and an attorney, would it be possible to have the city attorney sit in with us?
It's possible if his calendar allows it, I mean, huh? You okay? He's apparently available, so if you, do you have his phone number?
Well, what I would tell him now, Steve, may I call you Steven? Yeah.
Go back and speak to there, so you stay on the record, please.
Excuse me, I forgot, we have one meeting at 8:30, we have a meeting at 1 o'clock, 1 o'clock tomorrow afternoon, let me change your plans. Would you be available at 1 o'clock? I will, I will call the gate, we are going to be meeting.
Well, why don't you just go ahead and give me a call later today?
I'll do that.
So we can coordinate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
In your, in your experience, we've talked to, obviously, we've talked to other people, attorneys, the taking of eminent domain, in some areas, there's compensation, but it is my understanding here that there would be no compensation for the taking of the property.
Nor will there be eminent domain. We won't allow it. We've already told them, we won't allow it. We have the authority to prevent it. So, he can tell your attorneys that, because it's in the, it's in the documents that created the joint powers agreement, known as Coachella Valley Association of Governments. It gives them authority for eminent domain, but it takes it away in the event the city council in any affected city votes against it.
Thank you.
So, we have other people that'd like to speak, and if you don't mind, if you kind of give us a summation, and then we'll, and come back at the end of it again, if you'd like, actually.
Pardon? I was reading, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay, can you wind it up for now?
Yes.
Because we have others that want to speak.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, can I mention something, and it might address a lot of your concerns? If you email me, I will email you all the relevant documents that we've received from CVAG regarding the...
Would you do me a favor, would you just bring them tomorrow?
I will do that.
Thank you, yeah, because what we'll do is, we'll make copies there, and I do want you, I do want you to speak to the various presidents, thank you very much, thank you all.
Yes, my name is Sid Hubbard, I live on Placerville Road in Thunderbird Heights, and I am on the board, I'm currently vice president of the board, but I'm really speaking at this point on my own behalf, not representing the board, because we haven't had a chance to discuss this issue, so I appreciate hearing your comments today. The first thing I would like to ask, though, is, could you recap what your motion is today?
Today's motion that I will be making will be to reject the two, that the city council will on record as opposing the two sites that are indicated, the two routes that are indicated.
Okay, that you talked about earlier.
That's the extent of today's motion.
Okay. One of my personal concerns is, like you mentioned, this seems like a very wide easement right away, this road, and I, myself, I feel like that should, we should, in that area, should be a shared path of bicycles and pedestrians and golf carts, if that, just that width should be shared going along that 111 at the most. Everything else, you're starting to destroy all the beautiful landscape and the aesthetics along that stretch of the road, so that's just a personal thought.
Be pretty difficult to share with motors on Highway 111, though.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's very impractical combination of vehicles for safety purposes.
You're saying they have...
Yeah, to have it there at all.
Yeah, okay. The other thing, I'm real concerned, like someone mentioned here about the access, is you go across each of these entrances, each of these subdivisions, who's going to have the stop sign? Is it the pedestrians and bicyclists, these golf carts? Are they going to stop and let all the vehicles go in and go out? And to me, that's, it's a real awkward situation.
My hope is, we don't reach the point of having that awkward situation.
Yeah, exactly. So, I think we're pretty much on the same page, if it's possible in your motion to say that you were in favor of restricting the width of this pathway, if that's the way to do it.
Well, we were, we were about to include that in the motion, but we're going to wait for one more meeting with the, with CVAG. But our motions, if we do continue to have a need to make motions, they will be increasingly stringent and not to their satisfaction, I'm sure.
Okay. And, yeah, any information you can, we have our annual meeting next week with our homeowners' association, and I'd like to bring this subject up, so they can get familiar with it as well. So, again, any information you can provide us, if at this meeting tomorrow, would be very helpful, okay?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Donnie Hubbard, that was my husband who just spoke, and we don't always agree, so, I...
No kidding.
But first of all, I would like to speak in favor of your motion regarding the Abrams Butler Trail. Actually, the first time I heard about this whole project was in early 1980s from Frank Bogard, and I'm sure you all remember him. And his, it was his original horse ranch, which evolved into Thunderbird Country Club. And I'm an old timer here, because when he talked to me about the trail, it was not golf carts, it was horses, pedestrians, and, you know, maybe bicycles, but I was surprised to see what it has turned into. And I think you're, we're all kind of thinking the same thing here about our concerns, so I won't repeat them, but actually, the lady who spoke, I don't know her, but Mrs. Roberts stood up and called it a roadway, and that is what it is. I have spent most of my adult life speaking in favor of trails. I have been to so many city council meetings as a trails advocate, that today, I actually bought two magazines with me, I was going to read them in case I got bored. Nothing was boring about this meeting, I'm so glad that we were here for the changing of the guard, there was a lot more here than I was expecting. But I, I am in favor of trails, I think it's a wonderful thing. I have been in communities where they would oppose trails, oppose trails, and then when the trail went through, the community members were the ones who were the big users and enjoyed it the most. But what they, what I'm seeing on the map is not a trail, it is a road, as Mrs. Roberts, I believe that was her name, said. And I happen to have known the Mr. Butler, that this trail was named after. I think he would be horrified to see what the peaceful, quiet place that, I believe it is open to horses, which has been a wonderful path for so many years, I mean, even before it was designated, it was being used as a trail there, it would be destroyed, basically, by what this is being proposed. And I have a couple of specific questions. Has there been environmental impact studies of this? How did we get to this point? Or do the environmental impact studies take place after the city's act?
Randy? Bruce?
Yes, CVAG is in the process right now, they just hired our consultant to do a sequo document, environmental impact report. They just, it's probably going to be at least a one-year process, there'll be public hearings, this thing is just starting to roll. So, we're catching this at the right point. The draft final report came out about this trail not too long ago, it's on the CVAG website, so that's what's causing a lot of this discussion now, is people are really seeing what this is all about.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know you're in a hurry, but I'll just tell you briefly, that I, I will go on record as a trails advocate, it may mean a lot of arguments with friends and neighbors, and even the husband, but the thing is, I am for paths and trails, this is not that, in spite of what they might be calling it. And I was active for a number of years with the National Historic Trail, the Deansa Trail, which you all see probably on, as you drive along, and you see the road markers. That was an historic trail sponsored by the National Park Service, and we had public hearings up and down California and Arizona. And the important thing is, a lot of that trail, which now, I mean, it was the original path, the Juan Batista Deans, I won't get into that, but it goes from the Presidio in San Francisco down to Tubac in Arizona. And I was the state coordinator for that particular trail. We did not, a lot of that area is Highway 101. It went through cities like Santa Barbara, which already has a well-established path system. We utilized existing paths, made some improvements, and in some places where it's just an auto road, I mean, we couldn't change all of Highway 101. We had interpretive centers, and museums, and different things built up, but we didn't ask businesses and homeowners and property owners and farmers to tear down everything they had, just so that we could go through with, with a dream. And instead, we ended up with something very usable and wonderful that has two states very proud of it, California and Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. Yes, ma'am. There was another lady back there, had her hand up? That's no lady, that's my wife. Okay, whoever we're talking about, somebody, come on.
I know I'm small, I didn't realize I was that small. My, good afternoon, good morning, mayor and council. My name is Mary Jane Felice, I live in Thunderbird Cove, which I love dearly, and moved here to the Coachella Valley for my winter escape 11 years ago. I love it here, I love Butler's Trail, I love the Cove. I can't imagine what would happen. I come from the San Francisco area, I now live at Vineyard in the San Martin area, I can't imagine that this could happen. I'm hysterical, and I'm begging you not to allow either of those trails, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. This deja vu all over again, isn't it?
Yes, it is. My name is Murray Bryant, I live on Kelly Lane. We have two properties that back up to the Butler Abrams Trail. I'm certainly not going to repeat all the things, those of you, some of the council members that were at the city library meeting several weeks ago, have enumerated many, many things. One thing we, the residents, we do understand, is that the council members, should you pass any resolutions or go against any of the trail, you're going to take a lot of heat from maybe other cities and from CVAG, and we want you to know that we will support you vehemently. Our neighborhood, that, as you've heard, most everybody was there last week, some people couldn't be here, and some of the neighbors that could not be here gave me permission to speak on their own behalf, to oppose not only behind our trail, but also behind the library. And the library has a special place in my heart, the planting of the trees was my, our son's Eagle Scout project, and he planted most of the trees behind the library and along the trail, and I certainly don't want to see those taken out. So, in short, we support your resolution to oppose the Coachella Valley Link. We do not want it in our neighborhood, and again, it's been said over and over, it would change the character of the area. My family bought our property in 1984, and we have seen a lot of people come in and try to change the character of the neighborhood, and council members, Mr. Hobart, you know that we will fight it tooth and nail, and spend whatever money it requires to prevent that and keep the character of our neighborhood the same. But mostly, we also want you to know that when you stand up and take a position, that our neighborhood will be there supporting you, and we assume that you are going to take some heat if you oppose any aspect of the Coachella Valley Link. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Ms. Ram.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa McFadden, I'm a counselor at College of the Desert, and my dad, John McFadden, sat amongst you for many years as mayor and councilperson, and I'm here representing the McFadden family. We own six acres right along the Butler Abrams Trail, and I knew the Butler's and the Abrams as a little girl riding horses. Joe Butler used to ride along that trail, and I don't know if you know anything about horses, but you cannot come up on them from behind with golf carts and people running and having a roadway. There would be no more horses on the Butler Abrams Trail. And I'm sure some of you would recognize my home with the red, big, huge red barn, and we love that area, and we want it to stay the same. We don't want a roadway where there's going to be strangers and cars, small vehicles of any kind, we want it to remain rural, and as I was sitting there listening to my neighbors and all of you opposing the CV Link, I wasn't going to say anything, and I've taken off time for... Link, I wasn't going to say anything, and I've taken off time for work, and I really have to get back to work. But I could hear my dad saying, "You need to get up and say something and represent your family." And so that's why I'm here today, to represent the McFadden family, especially my dad, John, everybody calls him Jack. And I just want to thank you for all of the hard work you do. I know this is difficult, making these decisions for us, but you're doing it for our city. And I just wanted to thank you very much for, for opposing the CV Link in, in our area. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, we'll close the public session, and we'll move back now to the agenda item. And I would like to make the following motion, that the city council opposes the CV Link routes identified in our staff report in the form of reference to the Butler Abrams Trail, as well as the Paxton Drive, Highway 111 intersection. Is there a second to that motion?
I would second.
I'll second the motion.
The motion is moved and seconded. Let me now discuss some of the things that I think make this motion important and something that we as a city wish to be involved in. Let me start with the following. It wasn't until March 30th, which is roughly 16 or 17 days ago, that the city of Rancho Mirage learned what the proposed method of payment for the CV Link was going to be. In a recommendation made by city staff of CVAG, which essentially means Mr. Kirk, with whom I've had many conversations, I respect him, but disagree completely with him in relationship to this project, we learned on March 30th from him that the intended method of payment was going to be by taking our TOT reserves, transient occupancy taxes, also known as bed taxes, to take 8% of the increase from the prior year. Simple enough formula, but what that formula did was it meant that the city of Rancho Mirage, which has, were in third or fourth place in the valley with respect to total TOT receipts, it was a completely unfair proposal because people, cities in the CV Link route, some of which, one of which does not have TOT at all, yet they had about five to seven miles in the CV Link process. So they had no TOT, so they wouldn't be paying anything under the formula. The county, which has two miles of CV Link in it, pays, would pay virtually nothing because they have, I think they have one hotel, but it's, doesn't produce much in the way of TOT. So the formula for payment was arrived at without any input from our city. We didn't know about it until 16 days ago. The staff report also raised the issue of how much it was going to cost to maintain the CV Link on an annual basis. Well, up to now, the CV Link was sort of, it was an idea. It was never concrete. We never knew, we never talked about paying for it. It did keep expanding and, over in the CVAG corner, in width, but we had nothing to do with it. We knew little about it until a motion was put before the Transportation Committee of CVAG, which is chaired by Councilman Mayor Protam Wile. We reviewed the material that he received, and we learned, and I'll read from that staff report, this is, this is CVAG speaking. "The projected cost of operating and maintaining CV Link is approximately $1.6 million per year when the 50-mile facility is fully constructed." 1.6 million was a number that we gagged at and thought, how are the nine cities between Palm Springs and Coachella? How are we going to be paying 1.6 million? And that's just the projected first year. Now, you know and we know that the projected first year will end up being much higher. It'll go up because it's at least three years off with inflation, maybe having some increment in that. The costs are going to increase. So 1.6 is a minimum that is not likely to be, to be the actual fact. In Sacramento, just outside of Sacramento, there is a project referred to as the American River Parkway. The American River Parkway is a 26-mile running biking path. I don't believe that it has motorized vehicles on it. They've been in existence for a half a dozen or more years, but it's similar to what we had generally seen as a bike path, running path. The, their budget for 2014 to 2015 is, for maintenance, $2,908,000, and I'm reading from one of their documents. $2,900,000, and they're half the length of ours, and probably half the width, but that I don't know about. I don't want to make that as an asserted fact. And for operations, operations includes the officers, or rangers, as they're called by us and by them, rangers who patrol to make sure that crime is reduced, problems are dealt with, and so forth, safety factors are maintained, et cetera. For their 26 miles, they're projecting for 2014, 2015, $3,500,000. Now, that gives them about a $6 million budget for O and M, operations and maintenance, for half the length of what we have, is a projection of 1.6 miles. We, through CVAG, would include in that projection 10 full-time employee rangers and two management personnel. So assuming those numbers stayed static, we're talking about 12 full-time public employees. The city, or CVAG, estimates a cost for them, a total cost for them at $55,000 per person. Very few people in city government earn, when you consider their salary and their benefits, $55,000. It's closer to 80 on the low end, and going well above 100 on the higher ends. So the operations projection, maybe they're accurate, maybe I haven't considered them all appropriately, but they look to be understated. If the project, this one, this, this 50-mile project were paid by each city out of their treasury, based solely on the number of miles that they have of CV Link in your city, these, these would be the numbers. Cathedral City, three miles, pays $96,000, first year, and every year thereafter, something. Coachella, with 5.5 miles, would pay $176,000. Indian Wells, with 3.6 miles, would pay $115,000. Indio, with 5.7 miles, would pay $182,000. La Quinta, with 2.6 miles, would pay $83,000. Palm Desert, with 5.3 miles, would pay $169,000. Palm Springs, with 15.8 miles, would pay $505,000. Rancho Mirage, with 4.7 miles estimated at the present time, would pay $150,000. Unincorporated County, with two miles, would pay $64,000. That's if we were going to be paying on a per-mile basis, per miles within your city. Well, they obviously know that they'd be left out of the park if they came to each city and say, "Now, would you vote for this?" They wouldn't get a vote. So the first thing they've done to reduce the operations and maintenance costs is to propose that roughly one-third of those costs be covered by Measure A funds. So they would use Measure A funds, which would bring the numbers that I just gave you down by a third. So I'll talk about that more in just a moment. The projections that we have would have Rancho Mirage using the TOT formula, using the bed tax formula, that is not only the one under discussion, it was actually recommended for approval to be voted on in a couple of days by the Executive Committee of CVAG. They've taken it off the calendar since our initial rejection of this was, appeared in the paper about three weeks ago, about two weeks ago. Skipping only to a few of the years, and we'll ask our finance director to discuss this in some detail in a moment. In fiscal year 2019 to 2020, we would go from what they're recommending now, which now they're saying it would be about $28,000, is what we would actually end up paying under, using Measure A funds to reduce some of this. It would go to the following numbers. In 2020, it would be $122,000. These, these are using, very close to the numbers that CVAG has used. CVAG did not use the exact right numbers. We have the exact right numbers on what our TOT increases have been and what other numbers have been. The difference is negligible. So $122,000 would be from our budget in 2019 and 2020. Then, in 2021, it would be $156,000. 20, 2021 to 22, $192,000. The following year, $230,800. Following year, $270,000. And in the ninth year, again, using essentially their numbers, we would be paying $312,000 for maintenance and operation of the CV Link. No city in its right mind would buy into that, but that's the proposal where it is at the moment. The plan to reduce our operations and maintenance expenses by one-third is to use Measure A funds. Measure A was passed by the voters in 2002, and it was a one-half percent sales tax that was going to be dispersed throughout the state to cities and counties to upgrade our roads, our arterials, create, build bridges, or help build bridges, do the things that were necessary to get California back where it belongs as far, as far as having a first grade highway infrastructure, highway and roadway infrastructure. In the staff report, this is what it says, so I want you to know that, the reason I read some of these things is to know that it's not me playing with words. This is the staff report that we would have been voting on in a couple of days. Once approved, once this got approved by a majority of the cities, once approved by a majority of the local government signatories, a Measure A requirement to the attached agreement, CVAG would be permitted to use its Measure A revenues for preventative maintenance of CV Link, which they label a regional arterial, meaning an arterial highway. The Measure A ordinance that's in effect for the use of Measure A funds, as a Section 5, it states, "Measure A funds may only be used for transportation purposes including ..." dot, 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 "construction, capital acquisition, maintenance, and operation of streets, roads, highways, including state highways, and public transit, transit systems, and for related purposes." Clearly, this 50-mile path, or roadway, however you loosely might use the word roadway, a majority of the cities of our valley, if they vote to call this a roadway, then it is contended that Measure A funds would appropriately be used to take up approximately one-third of the 1.6 first-year million operating expenses. Whether it's appropriate to designate this linkway, or this link, this project, a highway to make it consistent with Measure A, I think is, to me, it seems like a stretch. But we'll see what happens as we keep our eye on this ball as it bounces down. An interesting point that I observed, Western Riverside, we're eastern, Western Riverside County has a quote, "non-motorized transportation plan." This allows for limited use of Measure A funds for bicycle and pedestrian improvements if, quote, "if the bicycle and pedestrian improvements are funded as a part of improvements to the local streets and roads," which this project that we're talking about clearly is not. It's not, doesn't have anything to do with improving Highway 111 or other roadways. It's, we're just going to call it a roadway. But the interesting point to me is that Western Riverside County can have one policy, saying the money is limited, you can't do essentially what we're planning on doing here, and in Western Riverside County, we're saying, "Well, if we call it a roadway, we can." The final route that this project takes must be acceptable to the city of Rancho Mirage. We have tried working with Mr. Kirk, and he's, he's a strong advocate, he tries to be a fair and reasonable man, and have no reason to believe otherwise, have a great deal of respect for him. But in Rancho Mirage, we see the linkway as impeding traffic, impeding access to business, impeding access to our own homes in many of the communities. We don't see that as being something that is in any manner favorable to the interests of Rancho Mirage. Our preference would be that they go around Rancho Mirage, find another route. If we're not in it, okay, we're not in it. We'll, we'll pay a fee so that our people can use it from time to time if it came to that. But in no other city is there this problem that we have. The reason we're on, they're talking about being on Highway 111, is because they can't go down the washway. If they could go down the washway without disturbing other communities, much like the Thunderbird people don't want it disturbing their communities, if they could go down the wash- the wash, we'd have no problem with it. Let it go and enjoy it to the extent we are interested. But it clearly is not of that nature in our city. To me, the funding issue, the $1.6 million, no matter what route they took, is something that's going to have to be addressed in a very serious manner. And to me, that begins with limiting it to a bicycle and jogging path, wherever it is. One of the reasons that we have the motorized vehicles, the electric motorized and the golf carts, is because it builds our argument to calling it a roadway. It builds somewhat the usage of, to make it seem a more practical investment. I mean, most of my friends who use their, who have golf carts probably would never use it. They would have to drive too far to get to the pathway to begin with. But regardless of the merits of any of these potentials, it seems to me that before CVAG goes any further, they've got to find a way to get the costs of operations and maintenance through the decades to come in a category of money, a sizable amount of money, that cities can buy into, knowing that they're not putting future generations, decades from now, into serious financial difficulties. And so, I would say to my fellow colleagues that our first step in this process for our city, our next step, our first step was taken two weeks ago, our second step, is that we reject the two proposed routes, and through our staff, urge that we have some serious discussions with respect to future funding. Thank you. Now, Randy, would it be possible for us, could we ask Isaiah to give us some information with respect to the numbers? Isaiah Hagerman is a CPA. He's been with us about a year now. He is a true breath of fresh air to the city and an outstanding accountant. And I'd like you, if you would, Isaiah, to give us some of your analytical thoughts with respect to monetary issues regarding this link.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, the TOT funding formula that was proposed in the CVAG staff report that went to the Transportation Committee on April 6th, really, the gist of it is it results in unfair allocation of costs, and it causes TOT-producing cities to pay for the maintenance costs of low or non-TOT-producing cities. You gave the example that one of the cities in the Coachella Valley produces zero TOT, yet they have five miles of linkway, and so they would not be part of funding the ongoing operations and maintenance of the cost. The concept of setting the year 2016 TOT revenue as the base year, and then charging cities 8% of the growth in TOT revenue in the future years will inherently increase the city's annual contribution over time. So, as revenue grows over time, and the base year is frozen, that growth, that 8% factor to that growth, will grow as well. This is what we all saw with redevelopment agencies. It was the same concept. So, for us, for the city of Rancho Mirage, the first year that CVAG was proposing to start charging cities this 8% of growth would be in the year 2017. For the city of Rancho Mirage, that was $28,350 in year one, and nine short years later, the city of Rancho Mirage's share would be over $312,000 for that one year, and it would continue to grow after that. So, inherently, you know, if you are a low, no-property-tax city, and you rely on TOT taxes, you are going to be punished in this calculation because that is a high-revenue source for you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, continue, yes.
You know, for Rancho Mirage, TOT revenue represents approximately 30% of our general funds revenue. So, the concept of committing such a significant amount of future TOT revenue to the CV link operations and maintenance costs in perpetuity would be financially challenging for the city of Rancho Mirage. And as a city, you know, we have struggled through the Great Recession, we've had major funding sources removed by the state, and our costs are increasing at a faster rate than our revenues. So, the idea that we don't need our future growth in revenues to cover costs is flawed. Right now, we're seeing costs growing at a faster pace than our revenues.
Randy, what kind of comments can you make to add to this discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, you sat next to me on Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday morning, when we went to the CVWD board meeting, and I explained to the CVWD board that the Butler Abrams Trail is a long-established rural trail, as everybody's articulated here today, and it has historical significance to our community. Now, the city has an easement to use that trail, but the Coachella Valley Water District owns the land. So, my request to them was that the CVWD not grant an easement to CVAG over the Butler Abrams Trail. And I told them, if I have to be back for them in the future, the city of Rancho Mirage would be represented. Couple of weeks ago, we asked CVAG to have another public workshop on the CV link. They scheduled that meeting in the community room at the Rancho Mirage Library. I've been concerned that CVAG has not been notifying adjacent property owners as the CV link has been talked about over the last couple of years. And so, we took the public hearing notice flyer, and we specifically sent it to adjacent homeowners associations and residents that are directly affected by the Coachella, by the CV link. Many of you spoke at that workshop last week at the library. Thank you for coming there, and thank you for coming here today. We have had CVAG's cooperation in the past on some links. They removed the link that went through Rancho Las Palmas Country Club from their master plan. They've shown us already that they can relocate the Paxton Road link, and we'll now ask them, of course, for the Butler Abrams Trail to be relocated as well. But as we've been talking about here, there's many more concerns before we even get into the long-term cost for maintenance. You know, as a city planner myself, you look at this project, and it's a sexy project. You think if you were planning the Coachella Valley from day one, you might put this link right through the wash, similar to the way City of New York was planned with Central Park in the middle of it, and everything would be built around it. But we don't have that option. City of Rancho Mirage is 80% built out, and as the mayor articulated, most of the projects that are built along the wash, they're already long-established. So, our concerns have to do with shoehorning this project in and affecting existing residents in terms of trespassing, safety, noise, and all of the other items that the neighbors talked about as well today. It's important to note that CVAG, the CVAG Executive Committee that consists of all the mayors of the city and county representatives, the master plan has not been approved. The CVAG master plan, CV link master plan has not yet been approved. It's still in a draft form. Depending on who you talk to, they say it's either 10% or 30% designed. But the point really is, we have been talking about this, CVAG has been proposing this project, I should say, formally, for the last couple of years, and some of us may have even voted, some of our elected officials and staff may have voted for the concept to be able to move forward. But until we get into the nitty-gritty and see where this is planned, and see how they're actually proposing to maintain it, we didn't know those details. So, at this point in time, we need to be able to oppose it. If we don't do it now, when would we do it? After the Water District has granted easements? After the master plan's been approved? After the project started construction? Somebody mentioned, I think Murray Bryant mentioned, we will take heat from regional governmental bodies and potentially other cities for this, but our job, as I see our job as staff and our elected officials, is to look out for the city of Rancho Mirage, our residents, and how we spend our tax dollars today and into the future. The scope of this project has grown substantially. It started as a $20 million project, they're talking about $100 million now. Originally, it was an eight-to-10-foot-wide walking path, now it's a 22, maybe 24-foot-wide path that includes electric vehicles and neighborhood vehicles, golf carts, equestrians, everything altogether in one area. As Mayor Hobart stated, we will approach CVAG one more time to sit down and try to work these issues out. And if we cannot do that, I will put this back on a council agenda in May for the council to take further action.
Thank you, Randy. If I may, Bruce, with respect to the Measure A funding, could you give us some idea as to how that would affect the city in other ways, other ramifications, and whatever other general thoughts you might have about use of Measure A funds to reduce by one-third the total cost of operation and maintenance?
Sure. Actually, I sat on the committee that formed the first Measure A back in 1988 with Dick Kelly with City of Palm Desert. We were very closely to get this half-cent sales tax to Riverside County, which passed with a overwhelming majority of the public approving it. In 2002, it was re, it was back to the voters, the voters agreed to extend it to the year 2039, and this money is used to build our regional arterial systems. It's also been used to help build our interchanges. It's used to build bridges. It's used to build a lot of the missing links, add lanes to arterials so we can move traffic. And with the last election, there was an option of maintenance. We could use this money to maintain the existing infrastructure that we built with Measure A dollars since 1988. However, the Public Works Directors in the valley felt that we have a list of over $3 billion worth of projects that have still not been built in the valley, and we should continue to focus those Measure A dollars on those projects before we would even consider looking at maintenance of the existing roadways that we've already built. My concern here is that these maintenance dollars now are being looked at to fund a CV link when we still have obligations that the voters have asked us to build over $3 billion worth of infrastructure improvements yet, and to even suggest that we're going to be taking over $600,000 a year to start with, away from our obligations to build our roadway networks, to pay for this funding of CV link, I think is a big mistake. We all know that gas tax revenues are down. We're seeing a 25% reduction in gas tax this next year, and the city of Rancho Mirage, with a combination of gas tax and Measure A, is what we use to build and maintain our roadway networks. So, if this money is suggested to go toward the CV link, I think it would have a drastic impact on our general fund, which means that we're going to have to use general fund money now to basically backfill these lost dollars. So, from my perspective, I am not in favor of using Measure A dollars at all for CV link. I think that we need to continue to commit that money to what the voters asked us to do, and that was to build our regional network.
Thank you. Any comments from council? How about our chairman of the Transportation Committee?
Mr. Mayor, I think that all of the points have been pretty well dissected between yourself, our city manager, our Public Works Director, and our Finance Director. I can tell you this, and I speak on behalf of the entire city council, we can take the heat. We're here to protect you. We're not concerned about any of the slings and arrows that are going to be directed at us. Our sole responsibility is to take care of our residents now, and not to burden future generations with costs that can't be measured. That's our mandate, that's what we are elected to do, and I assure you that that's what we will follow through in doing. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments? Mr.?
Yes, thank you, Dana. I'm presently on the CV link Subcommittee for the city, and I've really had an opportunity to review a lot of the alternatives for the linkway alignment. Based on the details for item number one, which is the alignment from Frank Sinatra to Country Club, and item two, the alignment from Paxton to San Jacinto, I cannot support either of these alignments. Many of you have already come to the conclusion that this project may not be appropriate for Rancho Mirage. The proposed routes destroy existing trails, remove parkways on Highway 111, and will impact businesses on Highway 111 from Rancho Mirage or from the Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center to Parkway. I would suggest that these two routes be relocated to other locations that do not have an impact on residential or business districts. There are several cities in the valley that may benefit from this project. Rancho Mirage is not one of them. I cannot support building the linkway through one of our unique areas in our city. We need to sit down and evaluate what is best for the residents of Rancho Mirage. It may be worthwhile to consider going back to the original objective of providing a bike, a walking, or an equestrian trail. Even if an acceptable trail is approved, there still exists the bigger issue of funding for operation and maintenance. As we go back to the drawing board to determine the future of this project, there are two overriding concerns that we will always keep in mind. One, protecting our residents' property values, and two, privacy. There may be a way to provide for the CV link in our city, but we must not sacrifice the quality of our residents' life. So, at this time, I think it's appropriate for us to turn down the proposed routes and accept the motion that was made.
Iris?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Needless to say, when I was serving as mayor, I had heard a lot of opinions, a lot of concerns, and I've been to a number of the meetings, including the one at the library, including the one the other day at the CVWD, where again, Mr. Kirk made a presentation. These presentations are very impressive, I have to tell you. It's really lovely, it looks lovely, it's very, it looks very desirable. However, when you start dissecting certain parts of it, and you really look at the nitty-gritty of it, you realize that there should be a lot of reasons for concern. A lot of the concerns to me start with parking. As far as I could see, there have been no parking provisions made for people driving to an area, unload their bicycle, or unload their golf cart, whatever it might be, and or put on their roller skates or their skateboards, and have a place to park their car so they can have access to this CV link. Needless to say, one of the other concerns was the planetarium. We are the only city in the whole Coachella Valley that could accommodate a planetarium. And we had a study that we were going by as far as the lighting that was available throughout the rest of the Coachella Valley, and available and being used here at our planetarium area at the library, and it was deemed that we were definitely the only place where the ambient lighting would allow for a planetarium. Needless to say, when you've got a lot of vehicles that have night lights, whether it be bicycles or motorized vehicles, you're going to add a lot of ambient lighting. That is of great concern. One of their slides that was shown at this presentation, which looked very attractive, showed the corner of Country Club and 111, except that that particular slide showed a lot of congestion, and it showed where we had bicycles, we had runners, there were walkers, skaters, skateboarders, golf carts, and other motorized vehicles. And they were all converging in this particular area. To me, it looked obviously quite unsafe. And I know one of... And I know one of the selling features seems to be that bicyclists on our streets are more vulnerable to being hit by a car. I think that when you really look at the overall picture of all these different elements coming together, certainly, the possibilities of having accidents appear to be far greater. I know I have friends in San Diego who come here with their bicycles, and they've all said that they would never consider going on this CV link. It just opens up a whole door of liabilities. If, God forbid, they should run into somebody, who's going to hold them liable? They'd rather ride on the streets where they know where they are, they know that there's no but one around them that's going to run into them, and they can certainly avoid oncoming cars or cars next to them. They were very concerned. One of the areas where they showed a slide was an underpass in this slide presentation put on by the CV link people. The underpass pathway looked like it was about eight feet wide, which really caught my attention, because they keep talking about this link being between 16 and 22 feet wide. But I found it interesting that in that particular area, to make it look a lot more desirable going underneath one of the overpasses, that it appeared to be only about eight feet wide, which was noticeable because of the vehicle and the bicyclists that were on there together. There's a lot of concern about breakdowns. When we have vehicles that are motorized, especially golf carts, who's going to come to their aid? How are they going to get any kind of towing mechanisms to help them out if they need to be towed away? Are there provisions that are being made to have emergency vehicles, picking up different vehicles that may be breaking down? I think that's one of a lot of people's great concerns. Also, with the licensing of these different vehicles, who's going to be monitoring whether or not these golf carts have a license where they could be used on city streets? Who's going to be monitoring whether or not they have seat belts? Who's going to be monitoring to see if they're even licensed to be, as they say, on the city streets? But are they all going to have headlights? I mean, if they're going to be using it at night, and they are dependent solely upon the lighting of the CV link itself, then certainly that's going to be another issue. Monitoring with these rangers or whatever patrol vehicles are going to be needed is something that we should all be a little bit concerned with. They have projected an use of this pathway as monumental. If somebody has an injury or a heart attack, how are ambulance vehicles or emergency vehicles going to get to them? One of the big selling features was that the thought was to get more people out on the street to do exercising. When this plant was first built, and it's adjacent apparently to the desert, Palm Desert Hot Springs area, they said that they felt that it was going to be a health issue that needed to be mitigated because of the pollution that this plant was going to be putting out. So they would provide funding so that we could build more exercise areas. I don't think that riding in a motorized vehicle really provides a great deal of exercise, and I don't think that that is what people really want to use as a mode of exercising. It's nice for a little ride, I presume, but how many people in Rancho Mirage are going to really have access with their golf carts to use something like that? Needless to say, crime is an incredible concern for a lot of people. I think that the more we hear about the cost, the less desirable it sounds also. When I first heard about this CV link, I was told that it was going to cost $37 million. Now, from what I understand, it's up to $110 million. We're talking about maintenance of $1.6 million, but we all know how fast these numbers change, and they usually don't go down, they go up significantly. I think it's a great idea to keep people out and exercising, but I think that perhaps this is something that needs to be looked at very, very carefully for the residents of Rancho Mirage. And I would certainly echo what some of the other thoughts are, that maybe this is not appropriate for Rancho Mirage. Maybe it's great for other cities, maybe it should come from one direction and stop at our borderline on the west, and then maybe it should continue on at our borderline of the east, and continue going east. These are great concerns to a lot of our residents, and they're great concerns to a lot of us. So I thank you so much.
Thank you, Iris. Charlie?
Yes, I do. I think, I don't think there's much more I can add to what you've heard here. I think everything's been covered greatly. I know that this council, this staff, has been over backwards and dissected every inch of this project, and they're putting more work into it than any of you really realize, including everything I heard here today, everything I heard at the library when they had the meeting. And I want you all to know that what you're hearing right now is that this council is here for the city of Rancho Mirage, and for the future of this city and the cost, to keep it down for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you all for coming. We are now adjourning, except we're going to be listening to what the city attorney tells us is going to be in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for your very nice comments about me and my team. We do have lively debates, but we always make sure there aren't any children within earshot of us. So the council, at this point, is going to recess into closed session to confer legal counsel pursuant to Section 54956.9 of the Government Code to discuss the case known as Veronica Juarez versus City of Rancho Mirage. The council will also confer legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, and that's going to include two potential cases.
We stand in recess.